Those are all different prices. And then, now, we're, now I'm going to talk about the judge who wants something, or anybody that wants something retrieved. A rush retrieval, seven dollars and sixty-five cents a cubic foot. A file from a carton on rush is ten dollars and twenty cents for the file. And then to file them back, of course, is a cost. But that is just pulling the items. If you want it sent here within a half a day, it's sixty-six dollars and seventy-five cents. If you want rush delivery on business day, it's one hundred thirty-two thirty. If you're asking for delivery on weekends and holidays with after hours, which I wouldn't think any of our people would ask for, that's two hundred sixty-five seventy. Plus a handling charge, which that could come from anybody who's picking and retrieving those up. So, given all these different kinds of prices, and I'm like, well, well, my first reaction was, well, now I've got to go out and see if there's like a state contract that covers this, or this is like the kind of service that I would have to bid out because we're, we're going to hit fifty thousand dollars before anything happens. Well, I, the state doesn't have a contract that way. And I didn't, I, I called my contact person that sent me some of this pricing, and I left a message for him, and he did not respond to me yet about, is there any kind of contract? I have so many different consortiums that I belong to that there might be one out there that's covered by this, or that covers this. But it's, it's, could be pricey, depending on how many files we actually have to send there. But moreover, then the, the next layer of complicity, as far as I see, is, is that all of these records belong to, you guys have quite a few out there for your department, but all the other elected officials do as well. So it's like, will you be bringing them all together to tell them this idea to get their reaction? And, and what do you think, you know, and, do you see what I'm saying? It, it just layers on the complexity. Can you actually decide between the three of you that you're going to send everyone's files there? And then, is that an expenditure that the general fund will cover for everybody? Or would you expect every department to pay their own fair share for? You know, if Jill wants to keep fifty years' worth somewhere, is she? You know, I, you know, and I know the courts have mechanisms where they can, you know, put fees on things to cover stuff, but I don't know that, if they would be willing to do that. That further complicates everything when you're saying you'd like to try to do it.
And you know, Joanne, there's a lot of prep work, I think it's going to have to go into this.
Absolutely.
Oh yeah, it's not just-
It's just not, come pick these up.
The labeling, and somebody needs to go out there, and, and Glenn can't do that.
Well, he-
Can he?
Well, he can't-
Does he know enough about what's in there that-
I think that he would not want to take the responsibility of taking your retention schedule and saying, yeah, that's what's in this box, so this box can be destroyed in 2020. And I wouldn't want to see him be responsible, that really is, you know, it's the clerk records- They need to be able to say, oh yeah, these can go or these can't go. It really needs to be the department, I feel, at that level.
Yeah.
Um, and if, and of course, these folks also do microfilming, so part of what you're losing from the facility is any kind of microfilming that Ramona's been doing on records that she's trying to get through, that kind of thing. And then the other thing that we have to think about is, when we moved the print shop, we moved the print shop out there.
Yeah.
So, that isn't, I don't believe we're at a stage in our lives where we want to get rid of the print shop. We still have a lot of forms, envelopes, letterhead that's printed there, that's much cheaper than if we try to find a local that will do that. And then when I think, we try to find a local to do that, that is going to raise the costs on printing because he's much cheaper than the local people would be. So we would have to find an area to bring him back to. He used to be, if you can remember, you know where my offices are now on 114? That little corner that the Board of Elections has, that used to be the print shop. And I don't know, I, in my mind, I was thinking, well, if we wanted to bring it back here, maybe it goes on the other side of Wick, down there where that, you know, that little side where we offer, I didn't, we didn't offer it, well, I, we offered it to the Board of Elections, but they haven't even looked at it. And I didn't want to go any further with that until I kind of knew what you were thinking about this other.
Would that be a full-time job, to print?
Yeah. Um, he, right now, he, he works, he starts his job at six or six-thirty in the morning because he likes to do printing earlier than when he, in the afternoon, is when he pulls the files and has to deliver them to prosecutor courts, la la la. Now, the other side of the coin when it comes to our records is, would you send every record we have up there? Or would you keep, like, a current year or to here at the county somewhere so that they're here for easier retrieval than having to do this long distance? Which would be, then, we still have the need for that.
Right.
And that makes a little bit more sense to me if we have an area that we can do that with. But it all depends on how many records we really think that we can get rid of. And like I said, he did the count, uh, uh, counting for me just to say, you know, well, there's like seven thousand boxes on the top floor. I don't know that there's that many on the bottom. So, you know, I'm sure we're looking at least ten thousand boxes in that building that would have to be moved.
Is there still storage at the bottom of the Kent courthouse for like the courts, if they-
Well, you know what, um, I recall that bef, it was after they had moved in, the clerk record spot shelving for down in the basement.
Yeah.
And they're keeping all of the Kent Court records there. They don't take them to the, to the Record Center anymore. They've got all their records for Kent Court for whatever years they're down there in the basement. I don't believe there's any more room for, I mean, I think they, they planned for, they've got some empty shelves for future, but I don't think there's room that we would be looking at that would take a year's worth of everything out there or two years' worth to store. So we would have to find something for that, if it, you know. But that's why this is so complex, because there's so many feeders into it.
You know, Joanne, this is, it's mind-boggling, but it's never going to get easier, it'll get more difficult as the years go on.
Well, and that's because, as best as we try to get people to go out there to mark boxes for destruction, they are, that, you know, I've been after Judge Berger, um, four or five years now. And they're marked, and I said, all we need you to do is sign the form so that they can be, and I can't get him to get that part done.
What does he say when you ask him, just?
No, a lot of times, no answer. And it's like, well, I, but we, you know, and we won't, we won't sign the destruction form on his behalf, but, um, and I think that sometimes people think, well, you know, there's no problem because we've got this building, well, as well, just let that stuff store there, you know, I get that. But now if there's a chance that somebody else can use this building for a different purpose, maybe better, more suited for that old building, then, you know, it brings up the issue. I mean, I realize that, you know, it's not like a, um, an air-conditioned building that you want your records to be stored in, but according to, um, some of the contractors that we had out there that, that looked at, um, doing some of the oddball-sized microfilming, it's like, you guys have things much better than in some areas that we've gone into that are, you know, it's like the, the top of a garage and it's, you know, whatever.
Yeah.
So, I know it's not optimal, then, of the way a lot of people would like to have it, but we're not as far bad as-
Do you think we were?
Yeah.
Do you think a, a letter to all folks that have stuff out there would be a beginning? And just tell them that we're-
Contem, what you're contemplating on doing, and that you need to go out and-
Just kind of ease into it and see the reaction we get?
Yeah, I mean, you can start with that.
And I'm sure it's not going to be a good reaction.
Well, the first thing they're going to want to know is, who's paying for it? Because, I mean, right now, they don't pay anything for storage, so.
No, but, and, um, and I thought you were talking about marking their boxes for destruction kind of thing.
Right.
And there is a cost for that as well. I mean, um, we would call, like, one of the shredder companies or whatever out there, if, if, let's say, for example, of the seven thousand boxes, we had half that people said, oh, we can get rid of these, you know, wishful thinking, you know, hard is. Try to be the glass half-full, um, they would, that would be a cost involved in that.
Yeah.
You know, getting that done, but again, that's complete destruction and getting rid of things and not having then to move them and then pay storage.
Well, Joanne, it's not that we've never destroyed anything.
Oh no.
Who pays for it when, when it is destroyed? Does the general fund just do it, or is it charged back to the department, or?
Um, to my knowledge, like when Job and Family Services has something out there, that, they pay for it. Um, and that's maybe why the Nifankhauser hadn't destroyed anything in fifty years, and then Jill was kind of carrying on, maybe with that theory or that effect.
Fifty years seems like an awful long time.
I don't think her retention schedule, God bless you, her retention schedule calls for that many years. But it was just, again, oh, you've got the space, so we might as well. Well, Glenn has also said, we're getting full up, you know, so that's why he was trying to get people. Now Janet Esposito, she, I know she has sent people out there, and they've gotten boxes and gotten rid of things. So I, I think every department is aware that they're supposed to take care of that themselves. Many, I'm sure, are general fund, you know, so. And then we have some departments, we've got the Juvenile Detention Center, who has a locked area down there, the sheriff has a locked area down there, that they have some, um-
Are their retention schedules forever? I mean, I don't know.
Well, they have some things that they're storing that, by rights, I believe, they should probably put in their evidence area at the courthouse, at the jail, but I'm sure it's full.
Yeah.
And so they've, they've utilized a room down there that they lock.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I don't think this is ever going to get any easier or better.
No. When, well, it wasn't very many years ago that the, the complete auditorium at the, that the old nursing home was empty. Now if you went in there, you'll see various areas that have, it's just, it's continual.
The only thing good about it is it, it may bring people to be more likely to get rid of stuff, especially if there's a cost associated with storing it, to keep it in that down.
The bad thing about, like, the Ravenna courthouse now is that, at the end of this month, beginning of next month, Glenn's going to start to get the calls. We've got fifty boxes that we want you to come pick up because they will take their oldest records that they have room for, have him pick them up, take them out there, and then they've got room then for the current year. But none of those offices up there, there was, when they did the renovation, I don't think anybody was thinking about record retention and, and what they should do. And it's the same thing with Vic.
So they're not labeling anything?
No, well, if they're giving them to Glenn, he won't take the boxes unless they're labeled and in good shape. But what I'm saying is, is that they themselves can't keep much retention-
Because they don't have the room.
Because they don't have the room.
They don't have a limit.
Yeah.
So are they putting their retention date on the box?
Yeah, yeah. So there's, I, I think that there's going to be a certain number of boxes that are going to be okay. But for example, I'll talk about yours. The way that they used to file here was, um, everything, they, they take everything and put it in a box from A to C. But now, within A to C, you may have files that, according to your retention schedule, only supposed to be kept a year, and then maybe some for ten years. So before anything on you guys could be destroyed, you will, you're going to have to go through those files and pull the ten-year stuff and put it in boxes, and the five-year stuff, and the one-year, it would all have to be redone. Might, right.
For some of it, some of it would be past, could potentially be past the longest time.
Could, yeah, but again, the way they're filed, you just-
So if there's like a ten-year, a five-year, whatever, that's starting ten years back, that will be not fun.
Correct.
But then, after that point-
And I don't think you file like that anymore, do you?
Yeah.
Yeah, you take the whole boxer saying, if this is ten years and this box is eleven years.
If we have, if they're that way, yeah. But unfortunately, I want to say that, like, let's take your files, like, you take your files on NDS, you're going to have a 2010, nine, eight, seven altogether in one box where the ends are. That's the way they were filed originally, before you guys started doing them in years.
Yeah.
And I think, and that was something that Deb was going to do before she left. She was going to go out there, like, half a day every day and start breaking those kind of things up, but that never, she never got started.
You know, I wonder if she would be willing to come back and do that, I mean, not as, I don't know.
I don't know how to, you know-
Just to do that.
I, I don't know, I'd have to ask, and I, we could ask Glenn about how many boxes you guys have out there, because maybe it's not as severe, you know, but that's just one example that I know, if you combine everything, instead of filing like in years, that's what you get.
Julie, when did you stop filing that way? Do you know about?
Seems like it's been a while.
Okay.
At least like ten years, I would say.
Oh, okay, okay.
I don't, I don't know.
Because we have them here now.
Okay. Well, who, who would be, where's, where's the staff going to come in? I mean, who's going to do this, Joanne? Who has the time to do this?
Yeah, that's what I said.
It has to be somebody that's working here because they have to know what they're looking for.
They have knowledge of it.
Right.
We can't hire a temp to do something like this.
Right, well, and that's why I said, when, you know, it comes to, for example, I know that Lori Arts from the prosecutor's office will go out there, and they're pretty good about, you know, trying to get their boxes in, in areas where we can let these go, now these can, you know, go to be destroyed. She'll write them down and whatever. I don't, you know, and if, you know, if she would be the person that would have to go out there, then that's going to be taking her away from her other duties. I know, that's why I said, it had, this has so many fingers, it's, you know-
And it sounds like we've got a little pressure on the timeline here.
Well, according to what Stacy said, that those folks are very interested in, um, moving around, very, you know, and I'm like, well, yeah. Um, because I, when I first emailed her, I said, I don't think this is going to be a quick process, but then she came back with her clients looking for a timeline. And I'm like, well, there, there's a lot of things that we have to have decided here before we can, we can do anything.
Catherine, do you have any thoughts on this?
How much should we? I'd be interested in knowing how, what our annual costs are now. I mean, like, what is Glenn and Ramona, or whoever, is the entirety of the staff out there? How, how much are their salaries, how much is, do we pay for the building every year? Just maintenance and upkeep? I mean, how much are we paying right now, a year, for the Record Center? And how does that compare? To what, what's being paid? To this, I mean, obviously, it sounds like a lot, like, in first year, but, you know. And, and then what, I would think we would still need a public records staff person here.
That's why I said, would that be a full-time job to print it? You would still do some of the-
Oh yeah.
Because we're going to keep, I would think, at least two years somewhere because you don't want to be paying these retrieval fees for stuff that you know is going to be retrieved.
Right, and, and we, we have some judges who, even if it may be, um, electronically scanned by the clerks, they don't, they want the hard file. And I, and I, you know, you can't, because maybe there's something, you know, maybe they think there could be something in that file that might not have gotten scanned or whatever, but they want that file. And that's one of the things that we constantly run into. There's, there's times when he's pulled as many records as they've asked for in the morning and take them up there, and then, before you know it, judge needs this, or whatever.
Now, are the departments paying anything for, for any of those services now? Or is the general fund picking up everything, or is that working?
Um, I believe there's a, there's a section in your cost allocation plan on microfilming services, and I don't know exactly how that is charged in the scope of stuff. But I can tell you that the print shop is an internal service fund, so whatever Glenn, under that fund, he gets paid half of, half there, and then he's half in kind of microfilmer, it's, I forget the split exactly. So the internal service fund kind of takes care of itself because we bill back the departments for their letterhead, their envelopes, whatever they have him do. Um, Ramona's strictly general fund microfilm, and then, like I said, part of Glenn. We have utilities that are out there, but they're not severe.
And has general fund picked that up, or?
That is, that comes out of the microfilm budget, yes. And then, for anything else, it's, you know, our maintenance guys take care of the lawn out there. It has been, and last year, um, we had the roof looked at, and the roof is going to need change. And we have, I, downstairs, I know I have a quote on, if we had to get the whole thing done, it's like a hundred thousand dollars on the roof. But far above, the building is not, you know, in such bad straits. I mean, you know, um, I guess when, I thought when NDS would go out there with their client and kind of look at this, I was wondering what they would actually think of because it's not like it was. We took the bathrooms and obliterated, you know, took out toilets and all that kind of plumbing to make record rooms. And that's what we've got, is a bunch of, and, you know, record rooms with nothing in them anymore. So, I wasn't sure that it was going to fit the need of what this person wanted, but obviously it did. We also have a garage of storage out there, um, that maintenance has some of their things in. And then, Water Resources has a building on that property. And I was trying to get ahold of people this morning to say, tell me again what this is for. I don't know if it's something with water, something with sewer, but we'd have to make sure that that, nothing hap, I'm sure nothing happens to that building. We'd have to keep some of that property, we couldn't let it all go. And I don't think they were interested in all of everything, but-
It's definitely the building they're interested in.
Correct, at least that much.
Didn't we have a problem with the microfilming that it, we wanted to update that or something?
Well, right now, we're still, we're still filming on an old camera that still works. And, um, we had talked about going to electronic scanning, and then, well, gosh, how many years ago did I bring it forth, the, the, the amount of money that it costs was higher. Now I'm sure it's gone down somewhat.
But Iron Mountain would take care of that.
They, they do that, they do that kind of service. And so does, is it Coleman?
Yeah.
I think Coleman has people that do scanning and things like that.
They have data solutions.
One of the things that is tough about ARBs, or what, what they've always run into out of there is the preparatory work first, because these files will be every which way they are and have ten stables here and there, and you're trying to get them all straightened around before you do. That's a lot of that kind of work. And that reminds me, I'll have to go through Iron Mountain to see if they have a special cost for preparatory kind of work.
Oh, I'm sure there's a cost for that. There's a cost for everything.
I was going to say, they, and by cubic foot. And I told the guy, I said, well, why couldn't you just have a standard price for, you know, a box? You'd have to go by cubic feet? And he said, well, well, now I know why, because that cha-ching, right?
Joanne, so when you're getting the, the cost comparison ready, can you please add in there any future repairs that would also be-
Yeah, I, yeah. Of what I know, yeah.
Needed, I know the roof's a big thing, but-
Yeah, otherwise, I mean, well, um, I think there was also a fire pump upgrade or something that we were going to need to have done, but yeah, I will include those so that you're aware. Yeah.
And, I mean, what is, what is, what are we going to get for the building? See, we don't even know.
I had, and I don't know if you want us, do you want me to start by getting an appraisal done? Or do you want to hold off on that until you know what kind of reaction you get from the other, what, the officials or something?
I think we should get an appraisal, just so we can have that number, because we're going to need facts to-
To give them?
Yeah, absolutely.
And it's my understanding, there's more than one person that could be interested in that.
She just said, in, in the response, was her client, so, yeah.
Did someone else look at it from another?
No, it's only been, and it was only the few folks from NDS. I don't know that the outside client person was there, or they just reported back.
Yeah, there's another group that I was told had expressed an interest in it as well.
So do you want me to?
There's a lot to chew on this.
Do you want me to, um, order an appraisal on the property, or?
I think we should, to be honest, because either way, I mean, if we decide to, to sell it, we need to know where to start, as far as the cost for that. And then we need to decide, um, how much land's going to go with it, because then we'll have to pay for a surveyor if we split off.
Right, because you have, you have land that goes all the way back to the airports piece behind it.
As a matter of fact, maybe we have to consider, does the airport need?
You may want to give it, you know, part of that to the airport and leave part with, whatever part you want to sell with the building. Otherwise, we would have maintenance going out there and mowing, and you've got two, you know, factions going on there. I mean, that's just a thought, I don't know.
Okay. I feel like I lean no on this, but I would like to see the breakdowns. I mean, it just, it seems like, and, and I think seeing the breakdowns would be helpful to just kind of get us thinking about how to-
Work it out?
Yeah, and also fix some of the problems that may be out there in, in dealing with elected officials that tried to get things out that can't.
When you say the breakdowns, are you saying you'd like to know, kind of like, how many records so, so one department has over the other, kind of thing?
No, I just feel like knowing these different costs that we talked about will kind of-
Yeah.
They just keep going on and on.
Yeah.
Thought about what we could do, I just, I don't know. And we probably would need to talk the talk about budgetary, um, concerns of, of the cost, to see if we're going to absorb it all, or?
Well, and, to be honest with you, I tried Iron Mountain because I know of that one.
Yeah.
Um, perhaps there are other places out there that do this. I'll do some research on that as well.
Well, would we have to bid that, Joanne?
Well-
Oh yeah.
So we couldn't just choose Iron Mountain?
Well, that's why, that's when I started adding up these things, I'm like, oh. That's why I said, I wondered if there was a contract covering it anywhere. So, I do have to reach out to my other consortiums I belong to to see, because one of them could have something, and that would be more helpful.
And some of them just do the scanning services, the pickup and the drop-off. They don't necessarily have the storage component.
No, um, I forget, the guy told me how many, they, they have installations all over the United States. You know, I'm, I'm aware of the-
Yeah, Iron Mountain's pretty big.
The salt mine, one, you know, but, okay.
I mean, I think if they're, the appraisal is, that there's a lot of, if there's a big advantage to making this big switch.
Okay.
I'm open to that, I just, it seems like- Oh, we just need more information.
Okay, all right, well, I'll, I'll order an appraisal, and I'll start getting, putting those costs together for you.
That sounds good.
May I ask a question? If, if courts were to go to e-filing, that would reduce the cost of your, of this, would it not?
I don't, I don't know what e-filing is myself.
E-filing, the, the records only exist as electronic format.
Yeah.
They never exist as paper.
Oh, yeah.
And so I'm thinking that maybe you want to look at the impact of-
I don't know, I'm sure if we even offer e-filing right now for our courts.
That might be a part of a trade, is to, whether to store paper or, or pay for e-filing.
Well, I don't know, and that would be probably something that we go along with their software system that they're using at the courts too, for what I know, I mean, you know, some, okay.
Or maybe that would switch the court's way of doing business, you know, if those costs were added in.
All right, then issues with jail construction?
Oh boy.
Um-
Thank you for doing all that.
What, pardon?
Thank you for doing all the work on the Record Center, and more to come.
Oh, that's okay. Um, so, I have been unsuccessful at getting anybody to give me a list of what they were talking to you folks about, right? Except today, I did get an email from Bob Pace, and Bob said, well, I'm not sure what Pete's talking about when he's, you know, inferring that there's a list, and he said, I don't really, he said, I, I share my concerns with Dale and Dave, and I'm like, well, that's okay, but they're not bringing them to the construction meeting and sharing them with anybody there. And, um, he says, you know, and I don't come to those meetings, and I know that's because he's, he's working from three to midnight because he sent me his email at like ten-thirty last night or whatever. And so, um, I, he, he said that there were some things, you know, that they're worried about the water temperature. Well, here, here's the thing about the temperature that goes all, the water, the hot water that goes all the way out to the pod, the new pod, where the ladies are. Because you, they can't run hot water all the time, and that's what he, he said, that's what they need to be doing, is running hot, hot water more than what they're doing to keep it down at that end. Otherwise, it stays- Otherwise, it stays run-"